Recording.
Yes.
Mr. Trinkus, are you ready to address the commission?
Okay.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I am. I didn't hear you before. Uh, this is Steve Trinkus, professional engineer from Southbury, uh, representing, uh, Dave Gauthier, who owns six Cindy Lane. Um, since the last meeting, um, we've looked at different development alternatives. Um, my client and I went back and forth over many different concepts. Uh, we finally came up with one, um, which I emailed to Beth, uh, what the late yesterday afternoon. And I'd just like to briefly present to the commission so that you have time to, you know, look at it. So staff has time to look at it over the next couple of weeks before your next meeting. So I'll be relatively, uh, brief tonight. Um, David, could you, David or Beth, could you let me share my screen, please?
Screen sharing is enabled, Mr. Trinkus.
Thank you. So, um, the alternative plan, which I submitted, uh, to Beth yesterday, um, basically has the following changes. The existing single-story, three-unit building will remain as a single-story, three-unit building. Um, in looking at different options, I spoke with, uh, my client, Tim Draper, and Tim showed me the plans for the homes that he's building actually up on Good Hill Road, which are, uh, three, uh, three two-bedroom units in each building. Uh, so we proposed two of those buildings on the southern portion of the site. In both cases, the front of the building would face either Cindy Lane or, uh, the adjacent property to the, um, south of the site, um, because that's where the front doors are, and that's where the architectural features are. The parking would still be behind the buildings. Uh, we would provide a total of 18 spaces for nine units, which is two spaces per unit, uh, which conforms, um, to your set, uh, to your zoning regulations. Um, the, uh, there would be a sidewalk from the parking area to the, oh, two and along the front of the building to provide, you know, provide private, excuse me, pedestrian access from the parking area uh, for the residents to enter their units, as these units do not have, uh, rear doors. That's, uh, where the entrance would be. The previously single unit that was in the north corner of the site has been eliminated. So the total density goes from 13 units down to nine units. Um, in my email, uh, to Beth yesterday and noted on the plan, we would provide two of the units in the existing building at, uh, for eight dash thirty G, one at sixty percent, one at eighty percent. Uh, stormwater would be handled in the same general fashion as the current plan with an underground gallery system to the rear, ultimately connecting out to the pipe system, um, in front of the site. Um, after the staff and, you know, um, commission is a chance to look at the general concept of this. Um, if this is something that they would, you would like us to proceed with, then we will detail, you know, all the, you know, required information, um, you know, and re- and get those plans, uh, back to you. Um, so that's really the, all my presentation tonight. I just want to give you a quick overview of this so that you have time to, you know, look at it and think about it before the next meeting.
Hello. Senator Murphy? Okay. Thank you, Steve. In regards to tonight's application, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a note of, um, you know, with COVID, it's very difficult to get things into the drive in a timely fashion. And I thought it was important that, um, Steve be able to submit his plan and even though it was late notice, because as, as we will see, um, Steve's email today, I just want to note for the record, the commission call passes, this was received at four o'clock. Um, and it's an email from Sean Murphy, who is a resident of fourteen Cindy Lane. And I just want to note that for the record. Um, also, it is related in the drive. Again, Steve, I don't know if you have a chance to look at it. But the health department did have some responses to be made in regards to the application. They did not get a chance to review the, um, additional submitted that you made. But just to note for the record, um, there is a memo in here dated February seven, twenty twenty-two in regards to, uh, the application and attached to it is, um, approximately, um, I would say forty pages.
Eighty-three pages, Beth.
Eighty-three pages of material pertaining to their, um, statements that they made in regard to this application. Uh, since I am here tonight, I do want to read my memo into the record. Um, the mission wasn't, didn't receive it till this evening at the meeting. And again, it's just because we have all this other information that came in. So I'm going to try to, uh, bring this to a conclusion. Um, it's dated February eighth, twenty twenty-one, and it is to you as the commission. Pursuant to the open, opening of a public hearing of eight thirty-two affordable, this affordable housing application on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. A staff report of the same was submitted with comments providing recommendations to make objective changes that would financially benefit the proposed development while lessening its physical impact with relation to the existing single-family dwelling housing stock that comprises the neighborhood of Cindy Lane. Excerpts of said comments include, um, the firming for the staff's experience, the ending of all proposed units. This is from my report of twelve fourteen. I'm just reiterating it in my staff report for the scene. Um, in a staff's experience, the ending of all proposed units maintain consistent quality, red curators, the integrity of structures proposed, and the further variance of state with the surrounding single-family neighborhood spoils the opportunity for the proposed structures to assimilate to the existing stock within the neighborhood. In conclusion, staff recommends that their comments be strongly considered with further review by the applicant. Additionally, staff encourages the applicant to consider design elements that were approved in the existing development located at ten National Road Extension. The applicant for said location considered staff comments and established an age restriction focusing on providing housing opportunities to persons aged fifty-five and older. As part of their review, staff was able to round down the restriction of units. Lastly, staff is favorable to the single-family home dwelling concept. After careful review of comments from the departments of the town of Lenoir, the applicant should strongly consider modifying the proposed development to include revitalizing the existing three-family residential structure and construct two additional single-family units for a total count of five residential units. A previous preliminary memo discussed the potential for that. The architecture for all of the structure should incorporate, if not be reflective of design elements in residential units found below Cindy Lane and surrounding neighborhood, end quote. When the public hearing for this application continued during the commission's regular meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, several commissioners requested the applicant to consider public comments offered and submitted by residents as well as staff comments and provide an alternative to the global crazy plan, unquote, as stated by the property owner in the screenshot text message exchange that had been submitted for the record. The applicant granted an extension period of thirty days to address the commission's request and discuss the same with staff. The applicant submitted the enclosed proposal, which was received last night, February seventh, twenty twenty-two, at nine thirty P M. It should be noted, staff did not receive any requests to review the proposal. Based on this miss- this submission, I offer the following comments in closing. The elimination of the existing single-family dwelling is disheartening as it was functionally inconsistent with the existing architecture and elements found throughout the Cindy Lane neighborhood as requested in the staff report dated twelve thirteen twenty-one. The references made by the applicant regarding the architecture for a separate eight thirty G affordable housing application at nine Good Hill Road, uh, Tim Trinker is irrelevant. As membership of the commission has changed since the application review was completed, and the applicant did not provide any architectural rendering, so supplement the design. Furthermore, the application for nine Good Hill Road was the subject of a stipulated agreement process through the day of our super hearing court. The commission should not, should know that every eight thirty G application is considered on its own merits. As has been mentioned, the application being reviewed is also an eight thirty G application. Proposed by Plan C dated two seven twenty-two states, the two units would be deemed affordable, one at eighty percent and one at sixty percent of the state median income. Respectfully, thirty percent of the proposed nine units is two point seven, which must be rounded up to three units in accordance with the Connecticut State Statute, eight thirty G. It should be noted that both of the two affordable units proposed are one-bedroom units. This is not consistent with the intent of the statute, which is providing housing that is equal to all aspects of the development. In this instance, the proposal appears to provide affordable units in the existing one-redroom units, which is not compliant with equal opportunity under the Fair House. Affordable units should be consistent or equal to what with what is being constructed. As with any eight thirty G application, an applicant expounds upon the need of affordable housing and not how eight thirty G allows an applicant to propose the development based on financial pain. The applicant has yet to express the need for affordable housing for this application. In closing, the town of Bethel has remained steadfast in its efforts to address the need for affordable housing and identify areas that are programmed for desirable density compromises and as for developers' financial need versus the functionality of the developments they propose, all to maintain a balance within an existing neighborhood.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Delory. I reside at twenty Cindy Lane. I've lived there for thirty years. Um, first, I want to thank the commission for, again, putting so much time and energy into this situation. Um, and I want to thank Beth, for that, and not for, for, um, for the points that you laid out in the memo you just read. I, I, I just don't understand what we're doing. I don't understand why we are, and perhaps it's my, my own naivety, why we are still discussing an application that has proven itself to be an expansion of something that was grandfathered as noncompliant in the first place, and we're continuing to look at something that was originally noncompliant. So that's my first point. Just blows my mind. Sorry for my frankness, but it really does. Um, secondly, all of the issues that we've discussed and all of the residents of Cindy Lane that have are present here tonight, and we've all brought up before, still remain. We're talking about nine units instead of thirteen. Nothing changes for us. There's still concern about a fire, fire engine, and other emergency vehicles getting down our street, what we have parking on both sides of the street and being able to get back out of our street. We're still concerned about the water. We're still concerned about our kids. We are certainly concerned about the integrity of our neighborhoods. We're going to have a two-story behemoth at the end of our street that is not at all in accord with the other dwellings on Cindy Lane. I, I am so tired of this. Um, uh, again, thank you, commission, and I hope that this application will be denied. Thank you.
And then shallow, as you know, what do you want to make? What do you? So what he's proposing now is one for two single families. Is that what I'm getting out of it? Besides for three family, that's there.
I, I'm just gonna, um, answer it. If Mr. Trinkus disagrees, please override. I believe the proposal is due to three existing one-redroom units that are now to, uh, you're looking at that structure, the proposals for two units containing two structures containing three units each.
Three units.
And it will be two bedrooms.
That's too many cars back there. I don't care how much he puts them on top of each other. There's no way he's going to get that many cars back there.
Steven, am I describing that correctly? I'm sorry.
Yes, you are, Beth. The existing, uh, one-story building with three units remains. The other two buildings are three two-bedroom units in each building, six, uh, plus the existing three is a total of nine units. There are eighteen parking spaces that can be placed there conforming to the Town of Bethel regulations, which is two units per unit, two, excuse me, two spaces per unit, which is what the regulations require. Under eight dash thirty G, we don't have to even provide what's required for parking. But we are, in this case, with reduction in units.
Well, each person that will actually live in that, than units, could possibly got two cars per person. I know that because I have five cars in my, uh, driveway and a thousand square feet. And it's crowded. There's no way nobody can come over and go look for another car. They got to park on the lawn. And forget if I have guests, they got to park on the lawn. So if they have two cars per person, you have way too many cars back there. Nobody could be able to turn around. God forbid if something happens, one's in front of the other, you can't get the cars, you can't shift them. There's no way. I know that from experience. So I think that, you know, way too many cars. Cut it down to one unit, maybe. Then you get, you know, then you have more space back there for vehicles. And that's, you know, that's about all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Louis Tochi, nine Cindy Lane. One thing I just want to bring up. Louis Tochi, nine Cindy Lane. One thing I just want to bring up, um, is one of the first meetings I made a comment about the, the condition of the property. And then when the board was out there doing the walk-around and then keep back at the following Zoom, a lot of that was brought up again, the condition of the property. And it is the worst piece of property in the neighborhood. So my opinion is this, the owner doesn't give two hoots about our neighborhood at all because the condition hasn't changed. And it's been brought up, if it was me, and someone brought that up and I was asking for something, I'm asking for you to let me build something there, I would clean up that property. I would do whatever it takes to be in your good graces. And it's basically, it's to me, it's a slap in the face or a spit on you because no one cares about what we live in. The owner doesn't. He just wants a paycheck from all those people. And I'm sorry, but we live there. We care about our property, and this person doesn't. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, eight toilets in Billy. So I have one question, and there's no research to answer this one. Why Cindy Lane?
Hello. Michelle Kellerman, nineteen Cindy Lane. Um, I just wanted to, again, say thank you to the commission. We really appreciate your time and effort. Um, the general feeling, I've, I've attended everything I could attend. I've attended the walkthrough, you know, of the property when you guys were there. Again, appreciate coming on on a cold weather day. Um, so, you know, when you get a vibe or an imping and you just feel like something isn't right, I feel like with all the information we've gathered and all the concerns that have been expressed and the care and concern that we have as residents of Cindy Lane, who genuinely care about our property and our neighborhood, as Mr. Gigi said, we are all out there taking care of our, our, you know, lawns to make sure they're mowed, and everything looks as good as we can do with what we have and our resources. And I, we feel like that that just doesn't exist. I know I, I can't speak for everyone else, but I'm pretty sure it's consistent. But me personally, I feel like we put a lot of time and effort and pride into our neighborhood. And we just would really like to keep that intact and not have it just take a nosedive because somebody's trying to make a quick buck. And I am also a bit flabbergasted at the lack of concern, it seems like, that's coming from the developer side. Like, if, if it was me as a developer, and I know I'm going to go in and I see that there's a strong force from these residents who care, and we're not doing anything wrong, we just care. That's a good thing. We're trying to spread a good thing here. There's been no feeling that they are even kind of in alliances with giving a crap, excuse my French, but, um, I just feel like they don't give a damn. And that, that's hurtful. So sorry if I feel a little emotional right now, but this is our home and we love it, and we'd like to keep it that way. It's important to us. Which is why we're always here, and we will be here until you guys don't have these meetings anymore. So thank you again for your time.
Uh, Gary Gazowski from five Cindy Lane. Um, it's my first time participating in person, but I, I, can everybody hear me okay? You know, it's, it's hard to add to what's been provided to the commission because so much has been said. You've been given information verbally or orally at these hearings as well as information you've received electronically. You know, I'm sure there's more than even I could best understand because this application started quite some time ago. So I'm not going to try to add to what's been said by my, my neighbors on my street, but I will tell you that if this is the, what they really want portion of that crazy plan statement to get what they really want, I'm still sitting here as a, a new, you know, true, when I say resident, I just bought the house at five Cindy Lane last week. So I'm a homeowner and I can speak from the sampler, not just a resident, but now I own that property. This house across the street from us, the, uh, three-family unit has been neglected, continues to be neglected, even after I brought up the concern, nothing's been, been done. I, I, I agree with the sentiment delivered by my, my neighbor that they just don't care. And, you know, as, as residents of this, of this neighborhood, um, even this new plan, which was hard to see from sitting there, I, it doesn't change the fact that it's going to turn this neighborhood upside down, at least on that side of the street. It's going to create the same, you know, uh, safety concerns. Uh, it's going to change the character of the street completely. I think you all know that because I heard your comments at prior meetings. So I ask you just to consider the interests of the Cindy Lane residents as being superior to that of a four-product. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I would advise that you also reach out to, uh, persons on Zoom. For those that haven't yet to participate on Zoom, uh, you indicate your interest to, uh, offer public comment by doing what's called raising your hand. Uh, there is a reactions icon and the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app. And clicking on that, uh, there's an icon that allows you to raise your hand. Doing, uh, that action lets us know that you have comment that you wish to offer for the commission. Um, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not seeing anyone at this time. It appears to have public comment to offer, so, um, I would say there's no one at this time on Zoom.
Thank you, David. Commission, questions coming? Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment if you're going to close the public hearing, please? For the applicant, um, if you decide to close a public hearing, then we are going to ask you to vote on the originally submitted thirteen-unit plan because that is the one that is fully designed, uh, to conform with the stormwater regulations, lighting, et cetera. And that is the one we, we would like you to act on if you close the public hearing and decide to vote at a later date. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just note for the record that the plan that was submitted by Steve last night is part of the record and, and he, I have a question whether or not it can be because it was, it should remain part of the record going forward, depending what is the decisions by the commission.
I, I, I saw that too. Um, Mr. Chairman, do you want to open the floor again for more public comment?
I can't hear. Um, yeah. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So the chairman is closing the public hearing. Thank you.
Good morning.
The public address there is speaking, we're in public here. Okay, one minute. Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-two, in general purpose of municipal thing to re-education for our screen property for managing, but it's not bad in special credit for property located at forty-eight Stone Hill. And we present the two persons, D K, commercial bill rate, and one hundred and thirty-seven revenue nine thirty, block sixty-four, and block twenty-eight. The public they attend and send comments by a regular mail and email at the land Bethel five C T five seven. The application can be found on the mini on the town of Bethel website or on our Google link. Ken Stevens, good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Olton. I'm an attorney. Is the microphone on?
Yes.
I think it's just our town.
Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney at Bethel two seventy-five to the avenue. I'm firmating for things in part of the visual parcel. And which I, we have an applicant at property owners to property two. Some of, some of plans that are turning down requests by staff, like the submittees for the record, are in there.
Thank you.
We're here for two applications combined in the one public hearing. The first is for a map amendment to apply the Stone Hill mixed-use overlay district to the property at forty-eight Stone Hill and for a site plan approval. We sent that notices at the public hearing, but I We sent that notice to the public hearing, but I, the postal service is running a bit slow, I don't have any required. You said notice is a public hearing, but I, the postal service is running slow, I don't have any required. So, the second question, which is you can see it on the screen, sort of yellow, was the former Stony Hill Inn. There's Tony's Restaurant, Bank facility, a bunch of cottages that operated as a hotel in, in a large bulk for all the rooms. Beginning in 2012, we started with the redevelopment of the site. And then got initial approval in 2013. And those approvals turned into first Maplewood, which is, you can see, the pond, which is a great facility. And second Copper Square, which has a number of duplex units and tap homes from the pond backwards. And then third, parcel P3 was open space carved out of this parcel and donated to the town, providing a family, and it is valued as a practice field. When that approval was done, the approval of the Copper Square in 2013, there was also an approval of this front parcel referred to as parcel P1 for 60 residential units, 60, that were rather large, they were about 1,000 to 1,300 square foot units. As well as about 43,000 square feet of retail space spread across the ground for two buildings residential above, all the stories, a bank and a restaurant. A number of elements of the front piece and upper square were integrated in the site buildings and were actually built at that time, including some of the drainage elements, sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, work on the pond, the water line serving the site and why. So, you drive by and there you can see completed new sidewalks and lighting that were put in as part of the project. The property was marketed for a number of years to implement that development unsuccessfully. Some of the anecdotal comments that we received during that process included concern over the residential being located over commercial, which is difficult to finance, that the restaurant building was too large, that the bank building was in the rear of the property, not the front of the property, and inability to get a traffic light to serve, for example, pharmacy on the site. That was a possibility, but they wouldn't have made it on track. We did ask the state to approve a traffic light to facilitate that and the state said no. O S T A, opposite state government authority. And over that time period, the demand has definitely reduced, which we can see today, the vacancies in and around Stone Hill. And all of this was creeping in. So, eventually we come to our applicant, Upstream Properties Two LLC, which purchased the property in the fall and brought to you an application for the Stony Hill mixed-use overlay district, which I affectionately follow the schmoo ad, which you approved. Our goal with this plan before you tonight is to rework and recruit site plan into a plan that works in today's economy, to complete the building process of this entire property that's taken 10 years, bring it into an economically productive use that generates tax revenue from town and we hope continues to drive growth in Stony Hill area, growth that fills that commercial base that's there. So, as noted, we began this process by talking with the commission about conceptual plans as to what we thought this might look like, which Rock will cover his presentation. And that led us to arrive at this proposal after a number of meetings with the commission, through the text amendment process, which was two commercial buildings along the street frontage, residential in three buildings in the rear. Apartments that consisted of a mix of studios, one and two bedroom apartments. And then while there are more apartments than what was approved, they are significantly small and more amenable to today's demand. The mix of apartment sizes between one and two bedrooms in studios means that the apartments are largely targeted at single people and couples without children. So, as noted, the first approval that you issued for this project was the adoption of the H N O D. This is an overlay district that can be applied to properties located in the RT6 zoning district, which this property is. And it provides some flexibility to human plans under it to deal with dimensional issues in parking areas. So, three key points we need to keep in mind about district. The density allowed in the SHNUD is 20 units per acre rather than 10 units per acre under the default RT6 zoning district. This is obviously less than 40 units per acre, which will allow town in the transitory district. Additional density allowed to five units, which is committed within the significant liberalization needed for. Our proposal is for 124 units of the base density based on our size. And an additional 13 units under the bonus for total of 137. And that's plus or minus included depending on how many. 137 is not plus or minus, that's the actual. The amount of parking is provided, we'll spend a lot of time talking about that story. Under the district, that's at the commission's discretion. You have a number of provisions in your regulations that handle things like mixed uses and different types of night, different types of unit combinations. That's not part of the SHNUD, but those principles should help you determine that we provided enough parking for the number of units and the commercial space that's involved. The dimensional criteria that apply are also mostly flexible. We clarified that in a text amendment hearing that was grouped at your last meeting. And so, that allows the front buildings to be located along the street frontage, which we gathered from the commission that was desirable to you. And it allows one of our rear buildings that's not located next to a residential property lot to be pushed so that it's behind parking rather than in front of parking. And we believe that is a better configuration for the neighborhood. So, I noted our application tonight is going to apply the schmoo ads to the property and to approve the site plan. We've received comments from your staff, town departments and the towns reviewing engineer, and we will be responding to those plans, preparing revised plans, preparing response memorandum and submitting them for the next meeting. We have not done that for tonight. So, tonight, we would like to try to be very brief and go through the application as submitted and get that process started, introduce the project. And then next meeting, we'll come back and we'll say, okay, here's how we've responded to your expert requirements. So, I'd like to start tonight with our traffic engineer, Neil Kalinsky, to go through two things. Number one, to talk about Stony Hill Route Six and number two, to talk about parking.
Formerly my local authority, we, I helped work in the traffic letter for this report. We looked at some of the traffic numbers and started out really by looking at previous cases, 2012, 2014. It's kind of a starting point there. And really what we did was we did a comparison of the trip generation, what they call it, the amount of traffic a new development could be expected considering. Based on statistical data, we're responding to Institute of Transportation engineers. What that points down to is compared to the prior approval for the site, which was gonna have more commercial, less residential now, coming into more residential, less commercial. Compared to what was previously approved during the weekday morning peak hour for 10. Or compared to what was previously approved, we were expecting around 14 fewer trips entering the site and around 17 additional trips exiting the site compared to what was previously approved. So, almost a wash. During the afternoon peak hour, we're expecting, based on the trip generation data, less traffic compared to what was previously approved. That has a lot to do with the fact that commercial is generally a higher traffic generator compared to residential. So, that, that was the basis for our traffic letters. The prior approval, which I mentioned was approved by the town and the state, the state looked at it, the Office of State Traffic Administration, which is the office of the condo. They looked at this and one of the conditions of approval was to widen Route Six at the driveway. Can't really see it here, the eastbound approach was widened. It was Route Six was wide to provide a separate eastbound left turn lane to get into the site. Except for from the eastbound through lane. That was pretty notable and we expect that to be sufficient moving forward. Ending the site, doesn't show up here, but on the new site plan, which was actually similar to the prior site plan, is gonna be two lane exit. So, left turners and right turns will have their own separate exit lane. Naturally, taking the left out of sight such as this onto a busy arterial is gonna have some delays during peak hours. Some extent, it is what it is. But the good thing here is that there's gonna be a separate right turn lane so that waters take it right out and not be held up by other folks trying to take a left out of sight. That was all part of the prior condition of the O S A approval. And we expect that to really be good moving forward. Site lines were reviewed before, they're not really, they're not changing at all because the site driveway is staying the same, looks sufficient. But all things considered, this is gonna get looked at again by O S A because we're gonna need to get comment for the modification to the prior approval because of the changes in the uses. So, that's it really in a nutshell for traffic. I do note that we just this afternoon, we've got peer review comments, which we haven't had a chance to look at. So, we're gonna look at those and prepare a proper response for that. In terms of parking, Mr. Rock over here is gonna talk. Well, O S A, as seen as someone on our staff, O S A approvals these days can take anywhere from six to nine months.
When can we start?
We can start actually now, we're gonna start preparing. A key thing to note is that the state will not approve an O S A modification or a new O S A until the town approves. First, we have to somewhat lag and that respects the town, must approve it for the state. We're gonna make the application, the state, I think, in the next few weeks. And then we'll go through that in the process, somewhat concurrent with the town.
Good evening. Rocket, Associate Civil Engineer with SLR International Corporation. Rock, R O C K, M E M O N D for the word. Associate Civil Engineer, SLR International Corporation, formerly my local crew out of Chechnya, Connecticut. Just gonna give you some, I believe everybody already knows exactly where this is located. But for those on the call who may not know where this is located, this is Stony Hill Road, Route Six. It's directly south of Copper Square as Attorney Nelson had articulated. There are three parcels originally with this approval, parcel B1, parcel B2 and parcel B3. This is in particular parcel B1, and I'd just like to go over the original approval, what that kind of site plan looked like as well as what the modifications are to be, are needs and are permanent demands in this particular site plan. If you can go to the next slide. Just as a overview, these are current existing conditions. Previously, there were a couple of buildings and obviously during the construction for Copper Square, there's been demolition done. So, currently the existing condition is there's an accessway drive that goes through the parcel and there is broken asphalt pretty much everywhere. There are a couple of areas where you'll see that there is a broken foundations as well as I believe there is a putting area that was originally there. It still remains today, but essentially what's going on is everything is, I guess it's enchanted. And one of the reasons that we're coming for you for this site plan is to, one, enhance the area and hopefully have a parking position to bring people into this area. If you go to the next slide, please. Wow, that looks really pixelated. If you could zoom in just slightly, if you're 25%. So, previously, as part of the previous approval, there were, and I believe Attorney Nelson has already articulated this. It was a mixed-use development consisting of 44,000 square feet of commercial within these two larger buildings as well as the, I believe they were calling that for a bank and a restaurant, as well as 60 residential units. The parking configuration, much like what we're gonna be proposing today, is kind of, I guess, surrounding the actual buildings and we're taking cues from that. We have a slightly different approach to make it a little bit more efficient and more for our needs, but essentially we're taking cues from that to move forward. Additionally with this, there are the approved driveways. The main driveway, the one on the left, which is we are gonna be utilizing the same curb cut that exists today because for Copper Square, they had to install the actual access drive. Additionally with that, there is the in and out lanes to be, just the southeast of that. And if you can head to the next slide. Almost beautiful. From a stormwater perspective side, we are basically also taking cues from this, but we are looking at it in kind of a, an isolated fashion. So, as part of this approval, there were two rain gardens that were installed towards the north of property lot. One being northeast and one just straddling the property line to the south. Those were sized appropriately for some, some of the buildings for water quality on our parcel as well as the two buildings that are located on Copper Square. Additionally with that, there is a portion of the parking, which is directed directly to the pod, which is to the west of us, which eventually overflows through an alley control structure and makes its way down to the park. As part of the previous approval, there was also an underground extension system located directly in the middle of the parcel as well as a small waterfall feature anchoring corner. Next slide, please. Almost, it didn't go. Beautiful. So, this is our proposal. Currently, we're looking at five buildings. There are three buildings which are primarily residential. I believe there's 129 units within those three buildings as well as the two buildings, which you granted the text amendment for, for us to pull them a little closer to the, about the street. One of the reasons we really like that is close to the street is these are also gonna have retail spaces. And one thing that market studies are showing is that if you have a retail space very close to the road, and actually they're using the term active, was it active transportation? Where it's kind of inviting people to either look off the street, they go, I see a retail space, you know, helps revitalize the area as well as you're just getting strictly pedestrian traffic. Additionally with this, we are proposing 244 parking spaces. Of those 244 parking spaces, 14 are designated as ADA spaces. This presents itself as a 1.78 units per acre unit, parking spaces per unit, which we have done extensive studies where we're finding that it's really, it's really that sweet spot for residential. And then additionally with this key retail factor, 1.78 kind of makes just general sense. And as part of the, the smooth zone, it is really within the jurisdiction of your commission to allow for this particular use to have this level of spaces because it primarily just makes sense based on the level. In contrast, just to kind of nail a lot of point there, Copper Square, which was built years prior, has about 1.7 spaces per unit. And they tend to have more bedrooms than we typically have. So, as part of their townhouse duplexes, they have a combination of two unit, three, or three, two bedroom, three bedroom units. And we're proposing more studio apartments, one bedroom apartments and two bedroom. And we're proposing more studio apartments, one bedroom apartments and two bedroom apartments. So the average number of people is lower, but if you have a studio apartment, you're really going to have one person with one car. That's essentially the idea. There's also the, I don't know if anybody knows, but the public act that came out, which establishes that you really can't ask for more than one unit if you have a studio apartment or a one bedroom or one space for a studio apartment or a one bedroom, because that's kind of the idea is that you'll have one person. Additionally, if you have a two bedroom or a two bedroom, you really can't ask for more than two spaces. Just going around the site plan for a little bit. There is a concentrated courtyard within the middle. This is kind of the amenity space. It has a pool. I'd like to use the pool. If you're going around and if you could scroll slightly up, just good planning practices, you'll notice that we're, so we're going for, well, it's approved in tandem with this. But if you look along the wetland line, which Dave is wonderfully showing here, you'll notice that we're not actually having perpendicular spaces as the previous approved site plan has, we are showing parallel spaces. That's one to also give a buffer to the wetland as well as to kind of ease into the area. Additionally with that, on the north side, if you move towards the Copper Square area, you'll see that there are two buildings in red. We are also proposing that there are parallel spaces along that property line to deter any headlights from going directly at that, at that building. Previous site plan shows ninety three spaces, which nine times out of ten, we're going to be pulling into the space, so the headlights will be direct forward. And one of the reasons that we did this place to put that. Additionally with that, there is a rotating wall on the western portion of the property that is in a field state. Really, the construction is going to be going up. Because of the proximity of that to the rain garden that was installed before the previous approval, we're kind of playing around with the degrading at those particular rain gardens to kind of, I guess would be easier if I show you on the next slide. Also, our thought about the most stormwater. So proposed stormwater, I guess, is where we're going to go here. So there are the two base or the two rain gardens that are straddling the property line. In our analysis, we actually disconnect those from our parcel and allow those to remain the same volume in order for basically Copper to maintain what they've actually been utilizing today. And with that, we're bypassing our required parcel to go directly to, as it would then. But with caveat that we're actually taking a chunk of watershed out of those two particular rain gardens and showing a net decrease to the pond, which should alleviate any issues as well. With this overall proposal, we have the water quality basin on the bottom right. So the eastern portion of the site, much like the previously approved plan. This in particular is actually being sized for the one inch, so the one inch runoff which is to dilute many pollutants. And as well as kind of to get the total suspended solids to, I guess, settle down. This is just a management practice and we we're going to produce the proof plan. I understand why they did it and we were having cues from that as well. Additionally with that, we're showing a water quality unit which is going directly in between the water quality basin as well as the underground infiltration system. That basically works by, so when water comes in, it spins around real fast and then solids and pollutants actually settle down to the bottom and it takes it out of the water, cleaning the water, polishing the water. And then it goes into the infiltration system. So we have an infiltration system, much like the previously approved plan. One of the reasons why we have them kind of disconnected is because there are existing utilities within the accessway that we're just trying not to. We, we basically just don't want to play with them. It would be a big problem mess if we had to relocate everything and just hydraulic or hydrologically, it would make sense to. What we're doing for this is we are actually showing a net decrease in the two hundred year storms. And then what happens is there's an emergency outlet, which then ties into the emergency outlet of the pond. So the pond to our east discharges to a major condo box along Route Six. And that goes to our, to our south. Now, the emergency outlet as well as our outlet are positively mentioned ready and it should not negatively affect the pond and there are also, we're going to be serving the the property with, with water, you know, public water, groundwater as well as we're going to the P U C as well as we've received comments from Tom Dilla, Director of Public Utilities regarding how the configuration is going. We're going to be submitting plans to them for approval. We've had preliminary talks and it's, it's going well. There is one minor, I guess, so during the construction for Copper Square, it is apparent that there is a sanitary name that is going through our property in order for them to serve. In order for us to construct this, we are relocating the sanitary name around building E around us to then discharge and go on its way to the maintenance pump station on Route Six directly southeast of us. Additionally with that, obviously we're providing electrical as well as gas services. Next slide. So as Attorney Olson has articulated previously, we did a turning study with the Bethfire truck. This shows the movement for where it can basically go all the way around the site. That's part of the submission that was given this evening. You really don't see any issues with it. I believe that because this is going to be submitted, fire marshal on the fire department will pack away in. If they agree with this turning movement or if there is any issues that they see as well as the locations of fire hydrants that we're locating in our useful. In typical fashion and as part of the well as approval, we have a central control plan which basically mitigates everything with regards to central erosion. So luckily for us, there is really no steep slopes on the site. I don't think it's in the presentation. So we're using a combination of steel fence primarily around the site to kind of contain everything as well as keeping stockpiles outside of the upper views. As part of wetlands, we want to maintain an existing condition approval that says that we can't have a stockpile out there within the one hundred foot of the view. And we're trying to accommodate that as well. Officially with that, I'm sorry to go through a whole bunch of stuff. I just wanted to go through the previous approvals, conditions, approval. Just to say what was done, if wasn't done, just to give an idea of how things kind of been flying. In, let's see, March twenty eighth, twenty thirteen, there was a memo to Peter Olson from, I believe it's.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Rock.
Yeah.
Um, I think it would be easier for the commission to understand if you were to take those points in the approval
Yep.
of the original approval and just cut case and put the responses in relation to those in there. It's a reason for the commission to understand in that way, if there are questions on it or the general public, they can answer it next time.
Sure. That's perfectly.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are happy to send you to the next slide.
Fortunately, I don't have anything else to say. Happy to have any questions to issue.
Do you feel for the general public?
Okay, sure. Good evening. So for members of the public who wish to offer public comment and have yet to participate in a Planning and Zoning Commission Zoom meeting, there is an action that we request you to do that lets us know that you have public comment to offer, which is called raising your hand. I noticed there have been some members of the public that were doing this through the course of the applicant's presentation, but for those that don't know how to do it, you would go down to the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom application and click on the reactions icon. There is, within that icon that appears, there's a button for you to raise your hand. That lets us know that you have comment that you wish to offer to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Looking at the floor right now, paneling the Yeah, it's, it's, it's the microphone that the webcam is in. I'm seeing, I believe it's a Dr. J's phone. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Irv Jennings, four oh eight Copper Square Drive in Vessel, obviously. A few things. I'm not a traffic engineer, but in the early morning, well, not necessarily early, seven o'clock, sometimes eight o'clock, rush hour in the morning and rush hour of the evening. Route Six is pretty much bumper to bumper. I don't know if they've ever done any studies at that time, but the number of cars out in front of Copper Square can be backed up from the stoplight that's about two, two miles or well, maybe a mile and a half down the road and that can be backed up all the way to Copper Square in the morning. Not quite as bad at evening. So I think that has to be taken into consideration given the sightlines that are going to be in play with the buildings on the frontage. We've already had some accidents at one of the entrances. And I think this is a, an accident waiting to happen the way this is spelled out. In terms of the road that goes, that is used as they lay through the property at this time to the back of Copper Square, that road goes through all of the commercial and the housing that you're going to establish. They're not parking in that area. And there are cars backing up. So it's a thoroughfare for the people at Copper Square, but you're also, it's also a parking lot. So the idea of a road that is connecting you to, from one side to the other with cars parked and backing out, again, is an accident waiting to happen. And my final point would be that with a hundred and thirty seven apartments here and a hundred and thirty six units in Copper Square, my guess is this is the most densely packed area in all of Vessel in terms of the numbers of people and the amount of room available on, on, on one of the busiest roads absent Route Eighty Four in the entire city. Again, I think you have some accidents and unfortunately probably some injuries waiting to happen. Well, that's basically my concern at, at this time. I mean, there are a lot of concerns. Oh, I want, one final important point. Is there a law against two people being in a the one bed, the one bedroom? What, what are the legal requirements for the number of people in the houses? As all of you are very well aware, there is a housing shortage. And I have seen, I've been coming to Danbury for forty, working in Danbury area for forty three years. And I've seen a tremendous growth in the number homes that have multiple, multiple numbers of people in them. What, is there, is there a legal limit that can be enforced that, that so that these one bedroom apartments don't have three or four people in them and the two bedroom apartments don't have larger numbers of people in them? Or is that just what you're guessing would, would happen? Because if these are lower priced and available, my guess is that they will fill up and there'll be more people in them than you're giving us as a, as a guest at this point. So thank you very much for hearing me out.
Eric, can we get your name again for the record?
First name is Irvin, I R V I N. Last name is Jennings, J E N N I N G S. Four oh eight Copper Square Drive. Been there for five years.
Thank you, sir. Next time seeing a Jim's.
I'm sorry, David, to interrupt. Again, I apologize for the time you're using sometimes. After being able to do their initial presentation, I do recognize that Greg Del Rio is on the call and he is one of the representatives from Hanover, Harvest Street. Excuse me, Michael Altice's associate, our traffic consultant. I just wanted to reach out to him in case he wanted to add anything to the discussion before we go back to the public.
Hi Beth, it's Greg Del Rio from Harvest Street in Hanover. Just that we have the traffic study, we have some comments that we're going to pass along after this meeting to S L R and we'll coordinate with them so that we do one comprehensive review of all the traffic impacts once those comments are addressed.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay.
And next I'm seeing a Jim's iPad.
Hi, my name is Susan Barone and my husband's here, Jim Barone. We also had, you know, concerns about traffic. We just moved here two and a half years ago and it's a busy, a very busy road. It seems like the person before us is definitely correct about it being a very congested area with the amount of units we have plus a hundred and thirty seven more. That's definitely one of our concerns. What are the rent prices on the studios and one and two bedrooms? I'm curious. That's a question also. People entering into our community and walking dogs, are they allowed pets? Are they going to just be able to walk into our community? Because we've been addressing that within our community. With the people that live here, are people able to have pets? And how do we stop a hundred and thirty seven families from walking and coming into our development? I don't know a lot about these plans, how many floors there are, what kind of not the apartments, the the two buildings in the front.
Uh-oh, commercial?
The commercial buildings, like what is allowed to go in there? When there's a parking shortage, what stops them from coming into where we are near our pool area? There's all kinds of things. I could keep going on and on and on. It seems to me, I'm not a builder, but it seems like for the amount of space that I look at there, this seems to be a lot to put in that area. Two hundred and forty four parking spaces, I just don't see it. A hundred and thirty seven units. It just, it just seems like a lot in the amount of space that's there. I forgot how many acres it actually is, but from just standing out on the sidewalk looking in, it just doesn't seem like it even fit in there, what you're talking about, but there's a lot of concerns. Those are just some of them. And I was wondering also why the people who were speaking about Cindy Lane were there in person? Was that something that was offered to us to come in person? Because a lot of the drawing that you had up, you could not read anything on it. I got my glasses on and I took out a a magnifying glass, couldn't read one single word on it. So that to me is just garbage. Those, that print should have been printed out and distributed. Somebody, I don't know who, but somebody should have had that all distributed to everybody in here for a couple of dollars. We all could have been looking at a sheet of paper that we could have read and saw what all that stuff said. The audio, we couldn't understand a lot of it. So this is very disorganized. To me, this counts for nothing. You should be able to read something and you should be able to hear something and you should be able to have the option to go into the building, just like the people at Cindy Lane did. So we could speak in person. There's no reason not to speak in person anymore. You know, this last thing I have to say is this whole COVID thing has just created You know, this last thing I have to say is this whole COVID thing has just created all of these situations that don't have to be. We need to get over it. We need to, half the people in masks, they half aren't, because everybody's getting comfortable with this. We should be able to go in one at a time, just like those people and speak in person. That's everything that I have to say.
Excuse me, Ms. Susan, what was the last name, Barone?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Pat Comagni, the director of planning for the Land Use Department and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Number one, the building has been open. People are allowed to come in, observe and look at maps. We have a room set up, we can get in and look at them individually. And that has been ongoing for a very long time. We were closed during COVID for a very short period of time. Number two, the land use department has been very obedient and honest. All you have to do is make a phone call. We could make arrangements for you to come down and see anything you wish to see in the lot. Please understand that if you have vision issues and you have issues with trying to read on a computer screen, which I can totally sympathize under some circumstances, I have problems with that. But please understand, our office is open and you are more than happy, we're more than happy to have anybody come in and look at files. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't know that we could go in. I was just told that there was a meeting on here tonight, so that's why I'm on here. I'm not trying to be rude or disrespectful or anything. I just was not aware of that. But, you know, it, it's not just that it's not visible to me. It's not visible to anybody. Anybody who's looking at this, you can't read anything on it and it was very muffled. So if you can't read and you can't hear everything, you know, that's, that's not really, it's not a good situation.
How, how is your last name spelled? I'm sorry.
B A R O N E.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, I'm seeing a Seth Davis.
And now you are seeing me. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Seth Davis. I live at 213 Copper Square Drive. I submitted comments yesterday on behalf of the Copper Square Homeowners Association, of which I'm president. I urge all the commissioners to look at those comments. I'm not going to go through them in detail now, but I would like to emphasize a few points. First of all, this is the unusual situation of a proposal for something that is actually in my backyard. I would like you all to know that I am not a NIMBY type person. I'm cognizant of the fact that a mixed-use development of some sort has always been planned for this, this parcel and look forward to seeing one that is well-planned, consistent with the plans and, and long-range development plans that your commission has set up in the past and is proportioned to the land and the community around it. With respect, the plan before you is not such a plan. And we urge you to look very critically at it, to ask questions in some detail and I'll go through some of the main points that we find objectionable and come up with some revisions that can be satisfactory to all of us. I'll say as a preparatory point that the original plan for the whole Stony Hill area, which Copper Square is a part, was extremely well thought out. And I commend those of you who are in the commission who were on that before. We also commend Mr. Olson, who represented the applicants before. I'm saying this from the perspective of having been attracted to this community because of the way the plan was set up. I'm also saying this with the perspective of having worked for several years as a planning board chair in another state. I've approved projects like this. I've lived in projects like this. I know what you're going through. That original plan was excellent and it's one of the reasons that all of us chose to live here. The changes that have been made to this are significant and troubling departures from that original plan. Because I'm echoing here. We want to call your attention specifically to several points that haven't brought up before today. The density issue. Again, you're talking about the same number of units that we have on what I estimate to be one-third the size of the property that, that we have at Copper Square. I also note that the plans that we're looking at here show basically only impervious services, which is of great concern in this day and age when we are seeing more and more flooding in our waterways because of overdevelopment. I greatly fear that this would be the same kind of overdevelopment and look forward to hearing more of the engineering review of the drainage plants that are set up. As far as parking, this is something that we have had experience with at Copper Square and learned from it. The gentleman pointed out that we're built at Copper Square at roughly the same suggested parking ratio to units. And he points out that our homes are larger. Well, yes, they are. We also have garages in our duplexes. We have two-car garages. And with that same ratio, we don't have adequate parking. Our problem, parking has been a problem. People come into communities like this. They have more cars than anticipated. I've seen it in my own planning experience. Now, all of these assumptions that come about, they're fine as far as being in a book. You put it into actual execution, it's a problem. And we've had problems. We have problems with visitor spots from Copper Square. It's a lesson we've, we've learned with great difficulty and we urge you not to repeat that same mistake in this community. Secondly, recreation. As Dr. Jennings pointed out, all the assumptions about single people coming into these apartments, they're going to be out the window. People have kids. People are, are grabbing up any kind of available residential space and cramming as much as they can into it. And you have, this, this plan provides for absolutely no recreation for children. It's a problem we have at Copper Square. We don't have enough recreation space for our children. We're wrestling with it greatly. Don't know the answers yet, but I'll tell you that we have more space for our kids to play, a lot more space for our kids to play. It's still a problem than this proposed development will have. The traffic. I was stunned to read in the traffic report submitted that there were no reported crashes at the Copper Square entrance. I know people in this, this development who have been in crashes. I know people who've been hospitalized and being right rear-ended trying to make a left turn into Copper Square, coming down Route 6. Maybe they didn't report it. I'm sorry they didn't. But, you know, if you want to have the anecdotal evidence, we'll be happy to bring these people in. We need a traffic light there. We appreciate what the town has, has been trying to do. We appreciate that the state has control over this, but adding 137 apartments is only going to make a bad situation worse. Finally, the visual aspects. As I stated in my comments, the renderings that have been furnished as part of this application package are really misleading. We cannot tell from these renderings what the respective position of the Copper Square buildings will be to the proposed units here, what the view impact is going to be on the people living in our developments. We're very concerned about the idea of traffic lights from the parking spaces coming into the ground floors of our 400 and 500 units, which directly front upon that. These are all things that need to be looked at. I won't take up any more of your time. I urge you to look at the comments that we have. There's a number of people at the community who've been working on this with me. We're going to continue to stay involved. We look forward to having dialogue with you and we'll be happy to answer any questions about our comments that you might have. Thank you.
Next, I'm seeing Mitch Heller, Copper Square.
Hello, everyone. Board panel, thank you for giving us our, our time and opportunity to speak with you. Just to kind of piggyback off of what Seth was saying, I also live in Copper Square. This is going to directly affect me probably the most. I live in the 400 area. So in the plans that are being presented to us now that we kind of saw the rendering, it is going to be the building that does not have parking behind it. So this proposal is proposing a four-story building 50 feet away from the back of my, my unit. Like, that's insane for me to think that that's even an option that someone would consider doing. We all bought under the approved plan that this board approved. This is our homes. This is our investment. Just like the developer who wants to develop in this, this lot, they bought it with the approved plan of what could be developed on there. To even think that it would be fair or not even a quality of life issue to then allow this developer to, you know, have something that's approved that is complete opposite of what we all invested in to, with us buying our units. It's crazy to me to think that this is something that would even be considered to be approved. Again, having a building that's going to be so close, I'm going to have to sell. It's a quality of life issue. I don't understand how anybody could think anything otherwise. Noise, that the density of this whole entire property, like Seth was saying, 137 units in a one-third area of Copper Square, like we feel here, it's tight here. I can't even imagine what it's going to be like on, on that side. Again, I urge everyone to read the comments that we prepared and thank you for your time.
Sir, your, your name and address again, please?
Mitch Heller, 419 Copper Square.
Thank you, sir. I would, I would restate that anyone who wishes to offer public comment, you may do so or indicate that you wish to do so by raising your hand with the Zoom reaction icon. I'm not seeing anyone else at this time. Chairman Stevens has, up, I see a Diane Ryan.
Hi, Diane Ryan, 13 Karen Drive. I, I was at the last public hearing and brought up information about the traffic issue. And I was told it had to be discussed at this meeting. I often, on Fridays from March until probably November, work at the demo garden that's across from this and we see backed up traffic there for, for long periods of time. Lots of beeping, people having to stop because of geese crossing the road for hours and buses stopped and backs up, backed up because of the highway backup. So people are usually going east on there and backed up. So, you know, I don't know when, I, I brought up before, when the traffic study was done. It was 2013 or whatever, but I think it needs to be updated and there's way more people. The other issue is, you know, there's several other proposals that are being made that haven't come before you yet, that are adding way more people in that whole corridor of Route 6. And, you know, looking at these things in a vacuum is very short-sighted. So I think you're going to have to think beyond the box here. And, and I think that, you know, the amount of people that you are proposing is going to add a lot of children to the schools and the schools are already really tight. So I don't know whether you have the developers giving any money towards infrastructure, but I think those are things that all, all need to be considered. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anyone else that appears to have public comment to offer, Chairman Stevens.
Obviously, we're all very concerned about traffic and the impact on traffic. That's why we hired a traffic expert. And that's why the town hired a traffic expert. There, we have done a traffic study that was updated in 2021, fully tracked accounts. And there'll be discussion between Mr. Olinsky, Mr. Olonte, about those counts. So perhaps we'll get through additional data and respond. That's an ongoing process. But the point that I want to make is that this is a stink highway and therefore the traffic on the state highway is controlled by Office of State Traffic Administration. We have to have their approval before we can do anything. And it's not quite accurate to say this commission doesn't have jurisdiction over traffic on the state highway. But essentially, USTA has jurisdiction over traffic on the state highway and we do what they say, basically. So, you know, the experts are going to look at this and make sure that the project, as we posted, does not have a significant adverse impact on traffic in the area. A comment was made that this is the densest development in Vessel, it's not even close. When this was approved originally, it was approved at about 8.6 units per acre, when the district at that time had 10. Yes, we'll be adding additional residential units, but as noted, the transit-oriented public district permits 30 units in it. So there's a number of projects that have been built in downtown Vessel, approved in downtown Vessel at that density. The road that goes from Copper Square to Route 6 was never intended to be a road. It was never intended to be a primary access to Copper Square, it was a thoroughfare. At any time, it was intended there to be an alternate source of access to Copper Square during an emergency. So any assumptions that it should be a full road that Copper Square residents can just drive on through and access this place. There is no legal limit on the number of persons who live in the apartment. Discriminates that type of limitation. The number of bedrooms really governs how many people can fit in an apartment. What we do put in our leases in other developments and we'll have in this is a limit on the number of harms that a particular unit is entitled to bring on the property. So if you have a one-bedroom unit, you're allowed to have one car. If you have a two-bedroom unit, you're allowed to have two cars and that is in lease. It's a significant difference in how we will manage the property as landlords and owners of the units as opposed to neighboring property in Copper Square, where the individual unit owners are the ones who are managing their unit. And it's the responsibility of the association board to adopt those regulations regarding the number of cars that each of you have to have on the property. There are several comments regarding fears that people who live on this property might go onto the Copper Square property. Copper Square is private property. They can do whatever they want to prevent people entering their property. This development is private property and we can do whatever we want to stop people from entering our property, if that's what we set to choose to do. My hope is that everybody will act like grandups and figure out ways to let everybody get back and forth from the property in a way that works for every community. Particularly since we want Copper Square people to be able to walk through our property, to get to Route 6 and activate that commercial belt. It's the whole point of doing this segment development. In terms of pets, we'll have limitations in our leases, size, breed, number of pets that are wanted. I'm going to ask Neil Olinsky to look into his statement in his traffic report about crashes. You know, these are reports that we get and maybe they just weren't timely updated. And we've said this many, many times through our presentation. We have an approval that's in place from 2013 and we're trying to hammer that point home to let you know that what we're proposing here is a modification of that approval. It's not really a significant intensification. because we're eliminating about 33,000 square feet of commercial. And yes, the trade-off is an additional 67 residential units, but it's a significant reduction in the commercial development potential. One thing that's important is that the approved plan had 373 parking spaces. And we've reduced that to 244. 244? Rocky is the only one from the eye. We have 224 bedrooms. And now it's 340 bedrooms. That's noted rental versus ownership. So the reduction in parking spaces is a reduction in purpose coverage, and it reflects the less dense development that we're proposing, even though it feels like it's more dense. Mr. Heller commented that it's a four-story building, 50 feet wide, but it's actually a three-story building. The approved plan had a farm in it directly in that space, and so presumably there would be cars driving the Chinese lights in this property. And finally, it's Ryan. Planning to infrastructure. Number one, our unit density mix of one and two bedrooms by itself lends to less children. You don't have one bedroom unit with kids. It's just the way it works. And second is, yes, we will be improving the structure. And our property will generate a significant bump in tax revenue. So that's all the comments that I have. I'm having to answer commission questions. Any additional comments?
My first question is, do you have a breakdown of how many one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and two bedrooms per day?
Yes. I'll stop in my head. No. Let me ask Brock, and I'll get.
I have a couple things. Do you want to?
Yep.
I think we concern about accidents on Route 6 is serious. I myself was rear-ended almost perfectly in line with the years. That was before the winding. So no, go back a few years. But again, I think the traffic in the area has definitely increased since then, as with the winding, so it's the same issue. If you go there on Saturday right now, any day, the back area, when we pull in that access road, almost always has cars in it. And I assume it's overflow from the Copper Square. So I do feel that the comments about parking is justified. The access road might not be wasn't intended to be an entrance, but definitely is. Growing up, Bethel, I didn't even know that wasn't an main entrance until recently. So I would definitely encourage most of the local visitants. It sounds like you guys were already on top of that. And then you just mentioned something about the square feet threshold decreased how much from the original approval plan?
44,000 to between 8 and 10.
And then how much increase in residential square foot?
Difficult question. There were 60 residential apartments that went to 137, but the size of the apartments is dropping. They were like 1,200 to 1,300 square feet originally, and we bring it down to 1,800. I have no idea how that can happen.
The amount of building space that was through versus what's going to be proposed or what's being proposed now. Just because it also is one, again, a building, a building. So I want to know if the people that moved into Copper Square knew that they could be coming in and having a building there in your backyard someday. Whether you're looking at a warehouse or an apartment building, it's still going to be a building. So that's just what I want to know about how the square footage compares.
That's all I got. Let me get a quick answer, please. So the mini-breakdown is two studios, 46 one bedrooms, 89 two bedrooms. In terms of the volume of the buildings, that's a difficult calculation. So obviously, it's not our responsibility to provide overall parking for Copper Square. They've been fortunate that our property's been vacant, and nobody is monitoring it, and no one cares. So I guess that's my only point on that. You know, I think we've given you enough data tonight that you can see how the parking ratio that isn't working for Copper Square still can work for us. They, like I said, they have 340 bedrooms at Copper Square. We're going to have 224. So right there, that's a significant drop to keep the same parking ratio. Kidding, you're confused. Copper Square is 340 bedrooms. We have 224. So our parking ratio, 1.78, I think was the number of rockies, which matches approximately what Copper Square has. We're a different project. We may be right next to each other, but we're a different project. And the size of the units, it's not just total number of bedrooms. You know, somebody who has a three-bedroom apartment, to me, is much more likely to have teenagers living with them that have two cars for the parents and one for the kid. Yeah, a one-bedroom apartment, that just doesn't happen. Sure, it might happen, right? People people cram themselves into whatever living arrangement they can find, but unlikely to happen. And it's controlled by our police, where we say you can have one car on your property. And if people have more than that, they get towed or fined. Yeah, exactly. Something like that. I don't know exactly how it works, but yes. The the point of having traffic engineers, first of all, nobody ever believes the traffic engineer. These poor guys have the worst job in the world because nobody ever believes them. But they have a science. And we have ours, the town has theirs. They're going to work together, and I guarantee you they're going to agree on the numbers. Because the numbers are science. Now, they may disagree on the fuzzy aspects of traffic. The state is going to have to agree on the numbers as well. And the whole point of having all these people and having the state ball is to make sure it's a city that's awesome. So I think that I think I got it.
Yeah, you did.
Excuse me, just as a comment to the commission, when when you're doing a back and forth, when you have an exchange with the applicant, please use the microphone so that we make sure that your voice gets picked up for those folks on Zoom.
Peter, one more thing. You guys, when you hear all the urban spaces, then including parking spaces, there's no other place that is specifically for the commercial.
That's correct. The the whole point of the design is that during the day, people can come in and use parking spaces for the commercial, but by the end of the day, they're gone. And then overnight, those parking spaces are available for residents. It's the reason mixed-use developments don't exist. No question.
Peter, this is a information.
Yes, we've we've read it, but I haven't prepared a response.
That's okay. Clearly, it's not happening today.
I don't think that's true. I think the chairman of the association said he was a supporter of mixed-use development and expected that they were mixed-use development. They were particularly like ours, but that's okay.
Yeah, I just had one area I wanted to question about. He's got a comment here about a lack of recreational facilities. No matter what you do, unless you're really strict with your leases, some people are beating in there unless you make a So my question is, you know, whether it's two or three or 30, is the recreational facility, that's something you need to address in your fossils?
So I guess I have two responses to it. The first is, we have to go back to the start of this development where a large parcel of open space was donated to the town that is a recreational facility. We can't just ignore that and say, oh, no, you need to provide additional recreation. Number two, we have our pool and courtyard area that provides recreational areas. We have an additional recreational area. As far as the pond, the lab, the association has expressed their concern about people who aren't association members going into that grass area. We understand that concern, but the reality is, it's private property. It's their property. They can decide who gets to use it, who doesn't get to use it, and if people are using it that they don't like, they can take action about that. It's not something that we feel we have to deal with in our in our leases. Make sure it's it's clear to our property owners where the boundaries are and that they're not allowed to go beyond that. But beyond that, it's the same as any other private property owners who live next to each other. Neighbor starts walking the dog. Oh, yes, we also have a clubhouse on our property. It's interior recreation.
Peter, I'd like to move a little further. I think this makes me feel weird. We're talking about the life and the reset and the nets. And the green space in this development is almost new and unknown. They're moving each other in one bedroom and two bedrooms in whatever, however, however many beds you have. And even if it was a park, it seems to be a period. Remember, in the right-hand corner over by the closest to Big White, it was a little turnpike, but that seems to have gone now. But I mean, I want to move there, which I did for the first time today. I was shocked at how little space there is. And of course, the right-hand corner has the size of the pool, but those are things I would also like to know.
The size of the pool? We might have an answer to that. 40 by 25.
I'm sorry?
40 by 25.
That's it? That's I hope you didn't have a wrong answer.
Yeah, let me have Richmond Q's over.
Thank you. So upstream properties too. In reference to the pool area, the size of it. I probably developed 2,000 rooms. I think the biggest pool we ever did was 35 by seven. And that was for 260 something rooms. We just finished one up in Grammy, 130 rooms. Okay, that comes for, I've never seen it overcrowded. It would never more than six, seven people at a time. And it's just type you know, you have a pool deck, you have clubhouse, which is probably 2700 square feet. The pocket park, we might be able to revisit and maybe do some underground infiltration there to try to get it back. Yeah, and it's literally, it's just water detention. So, you know, we can probably do a similar system to move it up to the parking lot for some soil back. That's out there.
Oh, good. And I was here for the original. And the original, well, there was a great amount of commercial. I think there were two, there were long buildings, and on top of those two buildings were 30 apartments in each shop. And that was it. The rest of it was overall commercial.
Four stories, I think.
Yeah. Two places that were on the top. But, yeah, I mean, 137 units. What does that say? It's part of the space. And that's all I have for right now. I have to go over everything else. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll we'll take a look and see if we can put some more room space on the ground. I just want to reiterate again that we started this process by giving five acres of green space in the back. So no, hang on. I mean, that that may have already been given, but it was association's doing approved mixed-use development on this property that had that didn't have significantly more room space than we're showing. And so we we get credit for that. You can't just say, oh, no, that doesn't count, and you have to give us more.
You're talking about 60 apartments, and now we're talking about 137 units. That's a big difference.
Less 33,000 feet of floor. So gesture, six of one.
Hi, so I'm also very concerned about the lack of recreational space. And I wonder, considering that the two the two complexes are literally on top of each other. I drove through a couple of weeks ago. I wonder if this development or we would consider working with the Copper Square Housing Association to develop some kind of security plan. Because I noticed, you know, just to make sure that everybody is aware and work with each other. You know, if if I put up the fence in my backyard and it buts up against my neighbor, I want to work with my neighbor to make sure they're okay with what I'm doing. I think it's it's just the neighborly thing to do. My other concern was, and I understand that the people at Copper Square have sort of been having like this bonus exit and access kind of thing. But is there a way to help ease some of the traffic from within and surrounding, within and between the two complexes? Is there any kind of thing that this development can do to help that? Of the lot is, you know, and I understand you bought, you buy, you buy a piece of property, and there's another piece of property that's going to be developed. These are things that happen. But I think a level of cooperation. And I understand that, you know, you gave away to the town all of this other space, but no one talked about the space within this development for recreation. And there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of green in this complex. So I would hope that when continuing, what has been made, that that is important to me.
So there is an easement in place that does allow people to pass and recast over person B1 to access person B2. But obviously, when there's a development there, it's not going to feel like a road anymore. It's going to feel like a driveway in Charlotte. And so, you know, it's not like that break is going away, and they're not going to be allowed to go back and forth. So I wouldn't presume that there's any security issue that we need to address or you know, that we're going to have some gate, you know, he's going to be allowed to go. That's just not the way it's going to work. Certainly, we would hope that as our development proceeds and we move people in there, that we'll have a friendly relationship with Copper Square. I don't think anyone here tonight can assume that that is the case and not to impugn anybody, but just that's not an assumption we are intending to make. I would love to see Copper Square reach an arrangement with us that their people can, you know, walk on through to into Route 6. That's great. Walk their dog. And, you know, certainly, I'd like to see our ability for us to walk through their properties to get to the open space that's been provided. That was five acres of green space, including one of the most beautiful trees in Bethel. That's now a town court. It's a practice field. I don't think I can emphasize this enough, that we can't forget that that was done. You know, that was a significant chunk of the original approval was to do that subdivision, move that land to the town. That's the open space. And so it may not look like we have open space on this particular property as a result, and that's because we put it all in the back there. So I would like to answer your questions.
It's like a mechanism on the open space, and, you know, it's not really, I understand, my neighbors' brain is now open fingers to the property we're talking about. You're starting to think things now go so well, and then people walk through Copper Square, get the notice, and they walk along the roads. Then they start from the front doors, and they see this.
And they start from the front doors, and you see this. So, this is. That was basically how the approval was done in two thousand thirteen as well, because the open space was given at that time. Mr. Leibner, do you have any questions? Mr. Leibner, do you have any questions for the hour?
Bob, can you hear us, Bob?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Did you have any comments?
I have no comments or questions at this time, other than we need a better system than this, I think, because it, it is hard to understand what's going on in the room off of a Zoom. Thank you.
So just a question, most of my questions. But the open space property, is there easy access or right away or walkway is from other parts of the to?
Well, if, if Copper Square doesn't allow anybody to enter, then we would have to walk on the field route, which is right next door.
You want to put a picture?
Maybe it would have been on the satellite picture that was on the.
I mean, highlight it so you can see it better.
Is that an option? Do you even, do you work with Copper Square and put a designated walkway back there?
I'd love to say yes, right? That, that's the easy answer. I'd love to say, hey, we're all neighbors. We can work things out. Maybe, maybe we can. We're certainly willing to talk. But I don't want to mislead anybody on the commission to say, I guarantee it will do it. They're here tonight essentially asking you to deny our application, and they're opposing it, and a lot of the criticisms are, we don't want your people coming onto our property. So can we work something out? I don't know.
Excuse me, I feel I need to speak to that.
Sorry, it's town-owned property. Certainly, we're allowed to go on the open space. It's town-owned property.
Under the jurisdiction of arts and.
Open space, yes.
That's correct.
So currently, access has to go through private property together. There's no.
The only access to the, to that part of the field is often calling the road. That field is to be used by the Park Recreation Commission to use for arriving different sports.
It's a practice field, not a game.
I'd like to do myself to go and check it out. I haven't seen it in quite a while.
I said it can be used as a, as a game field also.
People, can you please use your microphone? I'm sorry, there was one thing about me, was that the people on Copper Square didn't realize they could come to this public hearing. And that was enough for all of us, because we had, we had a legal understanding, and I think we should let them know that they are. They wouldn't, wouldn't be able to come to that scene.
Excuse me, may I be heard for a second on behalf of Copper Square?
Excuse me, Seth. I'd like to speak before you speak, if you don't mind, sir. And then the chairman will decide who's going to speak and who's going to do what. In regards to that gate, number one, just so you're aware, at Copper Square, we have been notifying them, letting them know correctly. Who the association presidents and deans as to what we're doing here in Town Hall, or in certification meetings, so on and so on. Okay? And number two is, in regards to discussing amenities associated with the building, granted, my staff report was very short. But it was topics for discussion. And I just beg to differ with Mr. Olson on the site plan and going to a hundred and thirty-seven units or whatever they're talking about, because it's not where we are doing that, but we're changing the use that was originally proposed on that site. We're going from forty-three thousand square feet merchant use to almost ninety percent residential use. And I, I feel that that changes the amenities associated with the type of the project. And I think that's some of the discussion that we should actively receive in this area. The other part to that too is that, at the mix I mentioned at my staff report, is that I do have a lot of experience dealing with large developers and large pieces of property, and dealing with the dogs and the, and the. Go on this property and, and go on that property. And I really, really would be very excited to find an eight-foot fence separating Copper Square from this piece, because the town had to work very hard to make a complex there that all interchanged with each other and could work with each other. And some of the comments that I heard this evening, I, I took a little bit of a jacket to, because I think that some of the comments that Copper Square were referring to maybe were based on their own experiences dealing with rural development. And maybe clarify some of those issues in future meetings that we have.
Just to clarify, we have no intention of putting up the fence.
I use it now. What I say may, I'm not, is I do not want to see divided ones. That's what I'm asking. And in the past and previous allocations, there have been, you know, let's talk to them, let's be together, let's talk to the neighbors, things like that. And I think that that would have been a little bit more helpful if that was the part of the use that opens all. Then I can put an A for that.
I'm sorry, was that addressed to me? Okay, let, let, let me just briefly say, the Copper Square Homeowners Association will be pleased to work with our new neighbors in any way and discuss any of these matters. We have not been approached previously, but we, we, we look forward to have good neighbors and we will certainly be glad to discuss any of this.
With comments we, you know, continue with on this move or anywhere.
Our next meeting is February twenty-second, but I just want to notify the commission that I will not be attending anything. So respectfully request that it be continued through the A P launch. And I believe. I don't have my.
Oh, yeah. Well, we're opening the hearing tonight, for December eighth. So if it goes to March eighth, then. And I expect created, I need.
Thank you.
I, I might not be here for the.
You gotta use the microphone, Kitty.
Yes, what I asked for the commission was to individually contact me in regards to how they felt about the majority of the commission members to contact me. They would request that we, 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 for you to review this evening. Each of you have a copy of it, I believe. No, I'm sorry.
What is it that's in the drive, Beth? What's in the drive? Okay.
Who sat at the last seat? What were the occupants sat at the last seat? Okay, so who was sitting at the last? Has all, all the occupants been present during the allocation process of?
Beth, can you use the microphone so Bob can hear?
I'll just pull that up if you see it.
Okay.
So, who missed me? You missed me? Okay, anybody else? All right, so you have two occupants that can sit. And we, and we, so we're at, so we don't need to stand tall. Right. Timmons is not here. Doug was here and Linda, and Linda was here. Who sat last seat? I think they both, I think they both did. So now we have.
Are you using the.
Bob, do you see the approval on the screen?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to have a session somewhere in front of the house, but it's because of the health department. But it, it, in this resolution, I, I think under number two, it's number three, it's very clearly. But it was one of the problems with health department. And, and it's right here.
I'm okay. I'm okay with it, as long as we adhere to the six stipulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion for approval application for a two-minute development under C S G A thirty-G, located at one twelve of the Water Hill Road, assesses map seven three nine seven nine, lot forty-four, on MacGee, and shows Pacific, and then forty R, or after forty Z, thirty to the following stipulations, one through six leases. And the committee has approved the plan. The commission states that they found that the proposed plan will not affect natural judgment of neighborhood properties in the San Antonio District.
Opposed? Okay, that's the only two comments.
How to see? Okay, yes, I do. Would you allow me to liberty to schedule? Would you allow me to liberty this middle public hearing when I can fit it into the schedule pertaining to our fourth housing plan? I had some correspondence with State today, because we were too forward-thinking and had it all done and even stopped prior to the act coming into play last July. It does meet a certain criteria, so they said, just please have a public hearing. All right, so I'm going to schedule it between now and the end of the week. So probably sometime in April.
Okay.
I ask you to prove the.
Yes, I'm sorry. This time. We have a motion to approve the new time to avoid minimum six dollars and fifty-five cents.
I move that we approve payment. I move that we approve payment to the, to the deeper times count. I don't think it's very good there. To the new times for nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-five cents, I assume that is part of the.
On favor? Any additions? Then we have a motion to call.